At this time, we will call the Wednesday, December 11, 2019 meeting to order. Since Mark Lockmiller was able to join us and sit down, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. At this time, please join us for the invocation and the pledge.
May we bow. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for opening our eyes to see such a beautiful day. We thank you for grace and mercy that you allowed us to have on a daily basis. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We pray blessings upon our city and our city council and our mayor that we make decisions that are beneficial to our communities. Bless you, please keep us in your care. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I would like to take this with the fire of the United States of America into the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
And I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 25 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Warren, a second from Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. This time we'll come down for a few awards. Next, I have something printed for me this time, so I'll read it. Request the city council recognize the following employees for their years of service and commitment to the city of Tyler. At this important milestone, we express our sincere appreciation for dedication and the special contribution you make to our organization. They represent 40 years of service. So, that's enough of the formalities. Donald Staples, First, 20 years of service to the city of Tyler. Thank you. Here we go. Here we go. This is for you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And Ray Morales, 20 years in the residential building services department. Thank you. Did I just hear bad news?
Bad news?
Yes. Oh, don't. He is retiring after 20 years of service.
Bad news.
Bad news.
Bad news.
It's a perspective thing.
Thank you, Ray. It is. Thank you. Then Steve King is a deputy city attorney, 30 years of service to the city. Thank you for everything.
You're not retiring.
No, no. No.
I'm not going to let you retire. You can't retire.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And then chief award.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is the first time I've done one of these. And the Blueprint Ribbon Program was started April 1, 2004 to recognize exceptional employees whose idea and suggestions have improved productivity, saved money, improved efficiency, and improved employee morale. The employee we are honoring today has done all of those things, all in one. He's been employed with the city of Tyler for 18 years. Two years ago, he set out on a mission, we set out on a mission, to change out our work uniform from a rayon blend to a nomex work uniform. This young man is sort of my logistics guy. So, he put together a program, assembled a committee, and they decided on this particular uniform. But we had the daunting task of switching out the clothes for 150 people. And so, I put him in charge of it, he set out on it, and got it done in a two-year period. And right after that, I told him that we needed a commissary, an online commissary, so that we could manage these uniforms from here out. That saves us thousands of dollars from having to warehouse uniforms and warehouse someone to run a warehouse or anything like that. So, this young man put that together. It's operational, as of October 1, it's operational. Firefighters can now select over a 10-month period instead of 30 days. And all of that has been outstanding for the fire department to move forward. There's never been an obstacle he's not, has not been able to overcome or simply bulldozer his way through. This project was no different. Today, I also want to invite up, when he comes up, he does not know, but in the back of the room, I've invited his wife here as well. So, for his intense commitment and unwavering dedication to the city of Tyler Fire Department, it is recommended that the city council recognize Captain Hal Walker as the December recipient of the Blueprint Blue Ribbon Award.
She's coming.
Is that your wife?
Yes, she's coming.
Did you have to change?
Nah. It's good to be a little sneaky.
Heather, you have a presentation for us?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll have a hearing, and then we'll get into the zoning segment.
Our first presentation concerns Tyler First, our comprehensive plan for the city of Tyler. It was first adopted in 2007, and the plan calls for a periodic update to the plan to make sure that we're keeping up with any changed conditions in our community and addressing any changed conditions and making sure that we keep the plan updated to meet our principles, goals, and objectives. The plan has been in the update process since last year, and currently, we're in the final, towards the final phase of the update, which includes drafting the final plan recommendations, and then taking that to the steering committee as well as back to our community. The steering committee, over the last year, has reviewed data, including the community survey, which helps kick off our plan. Every time that we update Tyler First, we ask our community about many aspects of what their experiences are and their perspective. And then we take that information and we share that through the planning process. In asking the steering committee to identify our strengths and our challenges, these are some of the items that they identified. In looking at how, you know, as a population, our population is getting younger, we see continued growth in our healthcare sector, which is a very valued strength in our community. The diversity of education options, and several other strengths that we have in our community. Some of the challenges that were recognized, we're, just to highlight a few, we're looking at our continued struggle with our signal timing. However, on the plus side, we have a plan to address that. And so, some of these challenges were not really surprising to us as we reviewed these. And we realized that some of them, we were already working to address, and some needed some further investigation. Some opportunities in looking at, like, the sharing and gig economy, maybe there's some opportunities for our community in that area. Looking at autonomous vehicles, addressing the changing housing needs, not just are we seeing that nationally, but we're seeing that locally as well. And then our race relations, and then capitalizing on emerging technology. Some of the threats, and a lot of these were associated with state and federal type of mandates or changing regulations that impact our community. As we know, in the last legislative, Texas legislative session, we had some impacts that impact our ability to grow, and various other means that were, I guess, a hindrance to our community and our ability to grow in that area. So, also unfunded mandates, those are always challenging. And so, how do we address these threats? Another exercise we asked the steering committee to look at was, were these items, these specific topics that were addressed in our community survey, are they more a perception issue or is it reality? We had passed out various questions. So, you'll, for example, let's say we have six tables. Don't be confused by the number of X's because not every table got this exercise, okay? So, in this example, there were three tables that were asked about traffic congestion. And you, as you can see, it was more on the reality side. We all experience traffic, and so, we can understand how that impacts our daily lives. And then, we asked if it is reality or if it is perception, how do we address these issues? So, being more on the reality side, well, how, what kind of action items could we implement to address our traffic congestion issues? Which does remain our top, our number-one item on our community survey as an area to address, and it has been since we started surveying. And in this example, we see traffic control is a way to address our traffic congestion, possibly consider overpasses, complete toll 49. And so, those are just a couple of examples of what we could do to address traffic congestion. Our water quality, we asked, is this perception or reality? And another thing we need to consider when we're looking at these results is geographic, a geographic standpoint as far as perception versus reality. I happened to be at one of the tables that was asked this question, and it was interesting to hear that some folks lived in South Tyler, some lived in North Tyler, some lived in kind of the historic district, and just how that perception or that reality changes depending on where you're located. And in addition to that, with the consent decree, the city has been putting forth a great amount of effort. You see the utility trucks out in the field, you see all the work happening. So, you know that as far as perception or reality goes, you see the work happening on the street, and how does that impact your perception of what's happening with our water quality? So, in these examples, there was great, you know, some input as far as communication efforts as well as action items to address the perception and reality of this issue. Public safety, and see, this is kind of spread out across the board. It was very similar to water quality, so it kind of depends on your reality of, you know, depending on how, what your perception is going to be on this topic. So, again, this is a great example of where we have opportunities to communicate better with our community as well as possibly look at some action items to improve our public safety, which happens to remain one of the top items in the community survey as far as level of satisfaction. Management of the drainage and stormwater runoff, this one, again, looked kind of the opposite of the water quality. So, for most, it was a reality issue, and some of the action items were to complete a stormwater master plan. And then on the communication side, it looks like, you know, we are trying to address, we have a new communications employee that is working in this area, and to better communicate with our public. We also performed a future land use workshop where we asked about our growth, where did we see growth in our area, in our region? And, you know, where is the expected growth for our community? One of the challenges to this is trying to address the new annexation laws that are very cumbersome and can very, can restrict our growth opportunities, but we still want to proceed forward and try and see if there are ways that we can work with our community members and look at voluntary annexations. Then we asked, towards the end of our investigation process, we asked the steering committee to look at, well, are there any goals or policies that need to be considered? And what you can see here is, the white is representative of areas that already existed in our plan. So, these are consistent with what we had in our plan, so there's no changes there. And in the yellow, these are items that were considered to be new or maybe a different spin on something that may have existed in the plan. So, under North End, we're looking at possible street lighting improvements and some proactive code enforcement. We do have some limited proactive code enforcement when it comes to maybe tall weeds and grass and some other items, but it's not a holistic approach to proactive code enforcement. For historic preservation, the, consider adopting a maintenance and prioritization plan for the brick streets was recommended. We heard that several times, as well as implement the action items that were just approved in our historic preservation strategic plan back in 2017. And then in our parks and open space chapter, looking at adding parks at lakes, and then consider adding parkland dedication with new development or a fee in lieu of. So, these are, again, are recommendations, they have not been passed or approved yet, but this is what we're hearing back from the community. Housing and neighborhoods, again, is very similar to our North End with the proactive code enforcement, consider adopting minimum property maintenance requirements, and approve lighting. With transportation, we heard, consider park and ride options, both locally and regionally, and that is certainly a recommendation that could perhaps help with our traffic congestion. With our public facilities, we saw a number of items that were recommended as far as partnering with our Smith County partners on downtown infrastructure, take a lead on improving our entry corridors, and then coordinate with other agencies for public institution safety. And we didn't see any other changes in education, which isn't too surprising because during our last update to the plan, we added the education chapter. So, that was a whole chapter that was added to our comprehensive plan, and so, it looks like that is working well. We've seen all of the great work coming from Latoya in that effort, and we'll continue to monitor that. And then, we had some examples here of some early implementation items. As you, as you know, we have this opportunity to have a combined effort and visibility at the Plaza Tower for Visit Tyler, as well as our Gallery Main Street, our Main Street program, and this will be a great opportunity for our downtown presence. And then, we also made some changes to the Unified Development Code to clarify some residential, basically some residential products that we were beginning to see, but we just really didn't have the right zoning district for them, and now we've added that into the code for clarity. We have, as I mentioned before, gone through a public engagement process throughout the summer. We had several public engagement opportunities where we asked the public to give us their feedback on various areas, and those included health, community, and natural environment, the livable built environment, and interwoven equity, as well as resilient economy and regionalism. And this is just an example of some of the feedback that we received. We asked our guests, our community, to give us like a one-word feedback on what, what do they see these areas now, and how would they like to see them in the future? And for our parks and open space, they, the words that pop out as the largest are the words that we saw the most. So, they said dated, some said fun, progressing, so there's a mixture of what folks see today. But in the future, they want to see more growth in parks and open space, they see it as fantastic, they want to see it as fantastic, safe, bikeable. For historic preservation, we heard that it's needed, that it's great, and in fact, Tyler is leading. We are represented quite well in the historic preservation communities throughout the state. We won an award in just the last couple of years for all of our preservation efforts. We're often referred to when folks are talking about historic resource surveys. So, we're doing, we're really leading the charge there. But in the future, our community wants to keep up that momentum, they want to see it as fantastic, and make sure that we continue to go after funding and that we continue to have more landmarks. For our city growth, we see that today, there's potential and that we might have some challenges here. And as we look at some of the new cases coming through, we're starting to see where some of those more challenging properties are being looked at as far as development, and that's a sign that we need some more area to grow. And so, in the future, we, we're hearing from the public that they want our growth to be strategic, diverse, they want landscaping, and they want traffic to be addressed during that growth opportunity. For North End revitalization, we heard that today, it's considered as forgotten or neglected, it needs funding, and maybe it's restrictive. For the future, the idea is to see it thrive, and there's an equal distribution of growth. And the good news is that in our Tyler First plan, we do, we really promote and want to see that balanced growth in our community. And that's, that not only is good for the economy, but it's great for traffic congestion, so you can spread out that, that traffic. And then, for housing and neighborhoods, today, looked at, the perception is divided, and maybe that it's adequate. We saw a discussion about Midtown, and wanting to see more of opportunities in housing. For the future, affordable, pride in their neighborhoods, again, Midtown kept popping up, and wanted to have great neighborhoods. For transportation and mobility, today, no surprise, we heard some words like lacking. But for the future, we want to see more diverse options in transportation, accessible, and which includes buses and protection. For public facilities and services, lacking, some of the items include water, so that, again, I don't think that this is a surprise to us at this moment. But then, in the future, we want to see satisfied, sustainable, walkable. Again, public facilities and services includes an array of areas, including not only our infrastructure, but also areas like, items that are in the public realm. You know, you're looking at sidewalks, you're looking at our public facilities, like our meeting places, our recreational areas. We asked about downtown, you know, what makes for a great downtown? And these are some of the feedback that we heard from the community, which included some open space downtown. You know, your downtowns are very dense, and they're supposed to be. You want to make sure that you have that density, that's where you want to focus your density, but also that you're providing for open space for the folks that live and work downtown. Also, restaurants, opportunity for food trucks, maybe a food truck park, that it's walkable. Downtown's, that's just a priority for downtowns, it must be walkable, that there's entertainment opportunities, maybe a grocery store, nightlife, and of course, more residential options, which we hope to see in the near future. And what makes for a resilient economy? The high quality of life to attract people, that's one of the top priorities that we look at whenever we're trying to recruit more businesses to our city. We need to make sure that we have excellent education options. And again, this is what we were hearing back from our community as we asked them these Education today is seen as great or average, and that it's improving. And then, for the future, want to see it as excellent. For downtown, that it's growing, and along with that, sometimes we have growing pains, which, when you have growing pains, hey, that's a good thing because you're growing and you're improving. That it's artsy, it's historic, and that it has potential. In the future, want to see it as a destination downtown, that it has pedestrian-friendly streets, and that it is diverse and fantastic. And with our Tyler business environment, that today, it's growing, it's good, it has potential, and then in the future, vibrant, wealthy, and continues to grow. So, today, we are here, it's December, and we're giving the council an update to our progress on the five-year update to the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan. Our next steps is to take some updated information to the steering committee in January, on the 30th of January, and then after that, we would take the draft plan as it's recommended out to the public during the February-March timeframe. And then, we expect to bring back the recommended plan to the council in the April timeframe. With that, are there any questions?
No, thank you very much for the update, and thanks for everyone in the public that's participating in this. They take time out of their day, and we appreciate their input to make our community better. Are there any questions that y'all might have? Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go on to H1. Renissa, you're doing this?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Hopefully, everyone's having a blessed day. Trying to mess with that. This morning, we're here-
Are you talking to yourself, or are you talking to us?
Sir?
You're talking to yourself, right?
Yeah, well, the computer, I just, I didn't know where I was going.
Okay.
So, this morning, we're here because it is time for us to produce our comprehensive annual performance evaluation report to HUD for the Neighborhood Services Department, which includes community development and home funds. This hearing this morning is an opportunity for any citizens that would like to have input on the progress of completing our five-year consolidated plan. This plan is due to HUD on December 29, and as regulated by HUD, we are required to have this public hearing for public input. The plan has been available since November 27 at the Neighborhood Services Building, as well as on our website, to be reviewed. And at this time, I'd like to respectfully ask that the mayor open the public hearing.
Okay. So, at this time, we are opening a public hearing on H1, on the Neighborhood Services Department Community Block Grant slash Home Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak to this item? Seeing no one moving and no one coming up to speak on the item, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and then we will go back to the regular agenda, and that is the zoning agenda. Kyle, Z1? Deborah, did I do that sufficiently enough? Okay, thank you. Z1?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The, this first request is a request for a special use permit to allow for the temporary location of a portable restroom facility for TJC. The adjacent properties are currently zoned for residential use, but a large portion of them are currently undeveloped. The structure, which is shown here on the, in the yellow star, is to be a temporary facility for restrooms, which will be at the new ballparks or the baseball field on the property. The structure is not intended to be permanent and should be replaced within a reasonable amount of time. The applicant has indicated that they are seeking funding for a more permanent facility.
Okay. So at this time, we are opening a public hearing, uh, on, uh, H1, on the Neighborhood Services Department Community Block Grant slash Home Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Is there anyone in the audience, uh, that would like to, uh, come up and speak to this item? Seeing no one moving and no one coming up to, to speak on the item, at this time, we will close the public hearing, uh, and then we will go back to the regular agenda. Uh, and that is the zoning agenda. Kyle, Z1? Deborah, did I do that sufficiently enough?
Okay, thank you.
Z1?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
The, this first request is a, uh, request for a special use permit to allow for the temporary location of a portable restroom facility for TJC. The, uh, the adjacent properties are currently zoned for residential use, but, uh, a large portion of them are currently undeveloped. The structure, uh, which is shown here on the, in the yellow star, is to be a, uh, a temporary, uh, facility for, um, restrooms, which will be at the, uh, the new, uh, ballparks or the, the baseball field on the, the property. Uh, the structure is not intended to be permanent and should be replaced within, uh, a reasonable amount of time. The applicant has indicated that they are seeking funding for a more permanent facility. The, uh, the special use permit would be, is, is being recommended for a three-year period of time to allow for that, uh, the budgeting for that facility. Of the 41 notices that were sent, one, one was returned in favor of the special use permit and one was returned in opposition, uh, with a protest calculation of 1.18%. Uh, the, the concern was, uh, potential nuisance from the, uh, the facility. However, the, uh, as you can see here, the, or on the previous slide, the actual facility is, uh, quite, quite ways away from the, the existing homes in the area. The planning is zone commissioned by a seven-zero vote, recommended approval of the special, special use permit request, uh, for a three-year period of time.
Questions of Kyle? Oh, I have two cards here that are just here for questions. If you have no questions, then I'll entertain a motion if you want.
Uh, happily, we'll, we'll make a motion to approve Z1. I do want to thank Dr. Mahi and David Hudson, who are back there. Just thank you for what you do at TJC, uh, for all the growth. I understand you're at 12,000 students. So it's pretty impressive. So, uh, appreciate you guys.
So that, that's a motion by Warren, a second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Z2?
This is a zone change request from C1 Light Commercial District to, uh, DBAC Downtown Business Arts and Culture District. Uh, the applicant has requested the zone change to bring the existing property into, uh, conformance with the, the UDC. It's currently used as a, uh, a mix of, mix of a single-family residence as well as a, uh, commercial or retail, uh, use. The, uh, the adjacent properties to the northeast and south are currently zoned C1 Light Commercial and, and, uh, developed with a mixture of, uh, single-family homes as well as some commercial property. And the property to the west is currently zoned DBAC, uh, Downtown Business District and is currently developed, developed with a single-family home. This request is, uh, would amend the future land use guide from a single-family and single-family attached to high-density mixed-use center. This property is located within, within the downtown planning area as identified in the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan. Uh, DBAC zoning is appropriate for this location. The applicant plans to continue to utilize, uh, one side of, uh, their property for the residence and one side for commercial uses. Uh, the, the, the proposed zoning would, uh, bring most of that into compliance with the code sheet. Uh, the applicant currently has some outdoor display on the, the property, which would not be allowed, uh, under the proposed zoning. Uh, the applicant would be allowed to obtain, uh, temporary, temporary use permits to allow for some outdoor display on a temporary basis. Uh, that'd be limited to two per year, up to 30 days at a time. So, uh, but the, uh, proposed zoning would, would not allow for the outdoor display. Of the 11, 11 notices sent, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request. And the planning is zone commissioned by a seven-zero vote, seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Questions of Kyle?
Move to approve Z2.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, ma'am, sure you can.
That's my problem.
Yeah, I know. Well, come on up then. Yeah.
Sorry. This is new to me, so I-
No problem. Just take your time.
Proper context, sorry. Um, I have a different kind of property. It's kind of unusual. Uh, the DBAC, I understand is-
Ms. Walker, do you mind?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Jody Walker, 110 West Valentine Street, Tyler, Texas, 75702. Anything else?
That's right.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, I, I have a little bit larger property than most of the businesses, I guess, that the DBAC was created for. And not doing displays, I can understand for downtown businesses, but is there any other zone code that my property would fit in where you can do displays? We're talking about historic preservation and a lot of my business is, um, refurbishing, salvage things that, that our people are refurbishing their homes, restoring.
I believe, uh, uh, I'll verify this with Kyle, but this, since you are actually making this a residence and your business, I think that is the major conformity that DBAC allows, that C1, it would typically be a non-conforming use.
I've been there seven years and, um, apparently I wasn't in the right code for seven years, so.
Uh, I, I think that is actually-
I'm sorry.
That would actually be correct, yes.
So is, is that the only zone that, that you can have outdoor, you cannot, is there any zone that you can have outdoor display to some degree?
I, I think the outdoor display is C2. Is that correct, Kyle?
That, that's correct. Uh, C2 would allow outdoor display, but would not allow for, uh, the residence.
That's right.
Right.
So DBAC's the best thing for what she wants?
Yeah.
For the usage she's doing.
Essentially the three types of uses you're trying to achieve, the outdoor display, the, the store, and then also the residence.
Right.
Um, so there's no other type of zoning for, that, the house has been there since 1920, um, before me. It was, you know, people lived there and had business. Um, you know, I just, uh, I just feel like I have the room to do some outdoor display for historic things that, for remodeling. And I'm just, you know, it's, um, I know it's not, um, everybody's thing, but it's very much needed. Sorry, I'm doing it again. Anyway, I just thought maybe y'all could help me. Is there something, another type of zone that I can apply for or that maybe Tyler can create, you know?
Aren't you getting what you're asking for? I mean, you want to live there and you want to have outdoor merchandise and that's what you're getting. So what do you-
Well, what I understand is you can't, you know, you can't have outdoor display.
Kyle, would you clarify?
Can she have outdoors?
With the DBAC zoning, you can, right? All right. So the, uh, the proposed zoning would not, would not allow for outdoor display permanently. It would allow for, uh, outdoor display on a temporary basis, 60, 60 days out of the year, essentially. And I wanted to, want to go back to, uh, when we talked about Tyler First, uh, when that was originally developed, the, uh, the downtown pla, downtown planning area and the reason DBAC does not allow for that outdoor display was because it was, uh, at that time, um, uh, recommended that the downtown area not have any outdoor display. And so, um, the DBAC would be the appropriate zoning for that, that property at that location. Um, and yes, it, it, it would accomplish two of the, uh, two of the, the non-conformity issues right now, which are the, the commercial use plus the residential use. Um, and, and it would allow for, again, that temporary outdoor display, uh, but not permanent.
Yep. Uh, I, I think C2 would do the outdoor display, but I don't know if I would be for that right there. Anyway, so I would, I'd be for the DBAC, but I don't think I'd be in favor of the C2.
What about a special use permit?
60 days. I, I just, moving bathtubs is kind of hard. Yeah, I mean, um, are you saying C2 is a possibility?
No, I'm saying that I would not support that at that corner.
I was just, what type of display, outdoor display, are we talking about?
Uh, I think she just said bathtubs.
Oh, a bathtub.
Clawfoot tubs, antique tubs.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, claw, um, clawfoot antique tubs, those.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that would be the place to be doing that anyway, by the way.
Have you been by my property? I'd have liked to invite y'all by there so you can actually see. It is a benefit to Tyler. I get hundreds of people from out of town every week. I mean, I'm now taking the list and asking, I've always asked where are people from when they come in.
Right, right.
Um, I'm doing a thing. Do you think this, this, this type of store is beneficial to Tyler? Just to get some, some feedback, you know, just to get-
Well, I'm sure the store would be and, uh, most stores that have that are, you know, in, it's enclosed in, in the, the store. Uh, and so that would be, I mean, we, we don't really have a lot of stores that have outdoor displays of, of, of bathtubs generally, right? So, uh, most of those are within, uh, retail stores. Uh, so, um, I mean, we, you, you've got on the table here, uh, a DBAC zoning that I would support. Uh, and C1 is not a conforming use. So at, at this, I'll do something a little bit different than I normally do. And I'll say that we'll move forward on the DBAC and then you can have some further discussions and go back and work on C2 if you'd like to go through, because it's everyone's right to go through the zoning process. Uh, but I will say that I would not support it, uh, at that location. But secondly, I mean, you need to be conforming. And so, uh, I would make a motion to approve the DBAC zoning at this time.
Okay.
So do I have a second for that?
Second.
A second, uh, from McKeller. So ma'am, we're going to go forward with the DBAC and then you can start through the process.
Thank you.
Um, uh, and, and discuss with, uh, staff on that and some more. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any comments?
I, I have one other comment. Just when, when he talked about C2 and how he probably would not support that, think beyond, once it's rezoned, C2, I mean, what can be put in that place? Whether it's a, a used car lot, there's a lot of things that can be put in C2 that would make it maybe a reason why you couldn't or wouldn't support it. So it's, maybe it's not bathtubs, but-
Why, it would be more beneficial to put a car lot there than a, uh, and-
No, I'm just saying, the possibilities of what could go in there are very broad.
If I could, well, this is real, uh, they're bad. I mean, it's really, anyway, that's another subject.
If I could just mention that if, if it weren't C2, uh, the, the applicant could not live there either.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so-
That's correct.
C2 would not be in keeping with the, the Tyler First Plan and it also wouldn't address the, uh, the, the issues right now, the non-conformities. So-
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much, ma'am, for, for coming in. I have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and, uh, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Z3?
This is a, a zone change from C2 General Commercial to RMF Multi-Family Residential. Uh, this request is to bring the existing, uh, property into conformance with the, the Unified Development Code. Uh, it's currently developed with a, uh, a non-conforming apartment complex or, or two apartment complexes, uh, that had been vacant for a number, or a period of time and are no longer, uh, legal non-conforming. The adjacent property to the north is currently zoned C2 and is undeveloped. Uh, the properties to the south and the east are zoned M1 and are developed with storage units and that's light industrial. And then to the west is developed with single-family homes. This request would amend the future land use guide from neighborhood commercial to, uh, multifamily. The applicant plans to renovate, renovate the existing apartment complexes. Uh, the, the apartments have been vacant for more than six months and are no longer, uh, considered legal non-conforming. The apartments will have 16 two-bedroom and one ba, one-bedroom units, uh, with 32 parking spaces on site. The request is to allow the property to be rehabilitated for multifamily housing, uh, thereby helping to achieve the, the Tyler First goal of adding 3,000, uh, new residential units to the north end. Of the notices that were sent, 12, or of the 12 notices, zero were returned in favor or in opposition to the request and the planning is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommends approval.
Yeah, that'll be a nice remodel.
I'm glad to see it.
Yeah, I know. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, definitely. I've been looking, I've been looking at those for a long time and just trying to figure out what could we do with that. So I'm so glad somebody's finally going to do something.
Yeah, I agree.
Move to approve.
It's a motion from McGee, a second by Sellers. Uh, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So Mr. Shipley, you're, you're here for questions, but no questions. Thank you.
Next request is a zone change from, uh, R1A Single Family Residential to R1D Single Family and Single Family Attached Residential. Uh, the property, or the applicant is requesting the zone change in order to develop attached, uh, single-family homes. The adjacent properties to the north are zoned R1A POD, uh, Planned Office District as well as Agricultural. Uh, it's currently, currently developed with a wedding venue, an office and a single-family home. The properties to the east are currently developed with single-family homes. Uh, and the, uh, property to the west is the location of Cumberland Academy and a single-family home. And the properties to the south are currently undeveloped. This request would amend the future land use guide from a single-family medium to low density, um, to reflect single-family and single-family attached. The applicant is proposing single-family attached, uh, duplex and, uh, triplex units. Uh, all the units are proposed to be on individual lots, uh, so they can be sold individually. Uh, the, the subject property, uh, is adjacent to, uh, Gwin Farms on the east, which includes lots that are typical to R1D in terms of size and density. Uh, the adopted master street plan proposes a 60-foot collector street along the eastern property line that will connect, uh, Roy Road and, uh, County Road 2191, uh, also known as, uh, Barbie, Barbie Drive. Uh, the, of the notices that were sent, uh, zero were returned in favor and three in opposition, uh, with a total protest calculation of 1.38%. Uh, and these came from, uh, neighbors within the, the Gwin Farms, uh, subdivision. Uh, the plan that is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote recommends approval of this request.
Questions of Kyle?
And I'm just excited to see the possibility too of getting the Collector Road to help traffic in that area also too. With that, I'll make a motion to approve Z4.
A motion by Westbrook?
Second.
Second by McGee. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z5?
This is a zone change from Agricultural District and C1 Light Commercial District to Planned Multifamily Residential and RPO, uh, Restricted Professional Office District. Uh, the applicant has requested the zone change in order to develop, or develop multifamily housing as well as offices. The, uh, adjacent properties to the north are zoned R1B and RPO and, uh, as well as C1 Light Commercial, uh, are currently undeveloped. Um, property to the east is currently zoned PMF Planned Multifamily and C1 Light Commercial, currently undeveloped. Uh, to the south is, uh, location of a cemetery and to the west is currently undeveloped, uh, commercial property. Uh, the request is consistent with the future land use guide identifying the property as mixed-use center. In April 2019, earlier this year, uh, the applicant included the subject property as part of the, the larger zoning proposal for, um, Holly Tree South. Uh, at the time, the, this property was not included in the overall approval. Uh, the applicant has come back and, uh, proposed a, uh, the current zoning of a planned multifamily district to allow for, um, some restrictions to be placed on the, the property, uh, which include a, uh, a, uh, restricts access to Holly Tree Drive, um, from, from the, the property. It will have a 25-foot buffer, um, along Holly Tree Drive as well as a, a 25-foot buffer along, uh, the, the trail on the east side of, of, of the property. Uh, the development will also have direct access to Blue Mountain Road, which will, or Blue Mountain Boulevard, which will be the, the main point of access for the, the property. Uh, the applicant is also proposing or requesting, um, 3.41 acres of the, the property to be zoned as RPO or for office uses, which will also serve as a visual and activity buffer, uh, between the single-family and the multifamily housing. Of the notices that were sent, none were returned in favor and one in opposition with a protest calculation of, uh, .02%. Uh, the, and the plan is only commissioned by a seven-zero vote, recommended approval of this request.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. I do have three cards on this. One that says that they're present for questions. The first would be Ray McKinney. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ray McKinney, 1350 Dominion Plaza. Just wanted to speak super brief. Most of this, you guys already know, but when we were here in April, there was a path forward presented for us of how to proceed. We took those steps. We did that. In addition, we met with some of the leadership of the Holly Tree development and was able to sit down and have a very good conversation with them, very productive. They brought a proposal to us to really start the conversation off that we really weren't expecting, and it was an excellent proposal. We thought about it. We said, "Sounds good to us." They said they could support it. We said, "We can support it," and we're back. So, we're back, we're back here today to talk about that. So, that's all I have. We're excited about it and look forward to moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next card, Mark Lomiller, Lock Miller. It says Lomiller, but I know it's Lock Miller.
It's Lock Miller. You're right. Mark Lock Miller, 7418 Prince Dale here in Tyler. And I'm Bishop's Gate representative on the Oak Hollow Homeowners Association Board. And for those of you who were here during the April council meeting, for me, that was quite a marathon meeting. I don't think I'll ever forget that. But as you know, I was adamantly, on behalf of the homeowners, adamantly proposed, I mean, opposed to many parts of the 320-acre rezoning request. But most of the, kind of, if you will, the focus was on this particular tract. And that's why it was important to me, as adamant as I was against that proposal, I wanted to be here today in just a point of fairness and to support it. It is a, not a perfect proposal, as they have heard me say on many occasions, never let the perfect become the enemy of the good. And this is a very good proposal. It balances what I think are the legitimate rights of the owners and the developers, as well as the homeowners and in the larger neighborhood, if you will. Most notably, I live in Oak Hollow, probably don't benefit as much, but their willingness, particularly my friends and neighbors in Holly Tree, are benefiting from their agreement to orient the property off of Blue Mountain and restricting the access to Holly Tree for fire code purposes, kind of a crash gate type of, and it just really placated, in my opinion, a lot of concerns. And so, wanted to get up here and say that and to thank Ray, Trey, I see Darrell was here as well, you know, honorable people. I found them over the last 12 months, be men of their word, men of integrity, and folks that quite candidly, I'm glad that they are developing the property behind us. Also wanted to thank City Councilwoman Linda Sellers. She facilitated the communication amongst the group. I think if she hadn't been there, we would have still be talking at each other instead of with each other. And also, Mayor, I will remember, finally, you kept going through each phase of that during that marathon session, carefully going through each piece. And again, I'm not sure if you hadn't taken the time and the council that was here, that we would have really kind of thought it through and arrived at a solution that I think is going to serve us all well for years to come. So, my ask is that you approve the request as presented.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you for your time and involvement on behalf of your community. Mr. Priestner, do you want to say a word?
Thank you, Mark Priestner, 3815 Old Bullard Road.
I said a word.
Yeah, don't mess with him. Yeah. Just to reiterate, same thing.
Don't mess this up.
This all came out of the last meeting. We went back to the drawing board again. What you're seeing in the plan and going to the PMF is to put those restrictions in place, including those buffers along both the trail and Holly Tree Drive, and only having access for emergency reasons only. In speaking with the fire department, we will have to have a crash date to Holly Tree to have a second access, but we can do it as a gated only emergency access, and Holly Tree was good with that. So, again, reiterate the same things, thank everybody, and we think it's a great plan.
Great. Thank you very much. Linda, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. This is kind of the culmination of zoning of 320 acres, which is the largest amount of land zoned in this city that anyone on this council can remember or anyone at the city. So, it has been a very long process. I'd like to thank the planning and zoning folks, Heather and Kyle. I know you spent many nights with us and lots of meetings, and I know that every time I asked for one more map, you wanted to shoot me, but thank you for hanging in there. I couldn't have done this without Mark Ball Miller, Lock Miller, excuse me, sir, and John Hart. They represented the people. Ray McKinney and Trey Brewer couldn't have had better people to work with, so thank you. But most of all, I want to thank the people of District 1. You really hung in there. You participated. You proved to me that democracy works. You filled the police substation room more than once with standing-only participation. Even the mayor came and participated, and, I mean, he got really involved with it. So, 320 acres is a lot of property to be rezoned. We knew when we opened Grande that this was going to happen. We just didn't know it was going to all happen at once. So, thanks to all of you who participated and proved that democracy works in our great and wonderful city, even when it doesn't sometimes in the nation. So, we have a great city here, and we just need to keep moving it forward.
That's a great motion.
Yeah, I moved to a room.
And I'll second it. That's a second by Warren. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z6?
This is a request for...
Y'all can go ahead and leave if you want. I mean, everyone, y'all were hesitating, standing up, so...
This is a request to close some alley rights-of-way. The, the request is because the applicant's property is currently located within the plan and right-of-way, the, or their house at least. The rights-of-way were dedicated by plan in 1949 and have never been improved. The applicant is requesting the closure of the right-of-way in order to make sure that their, their home is on, on their property. The rights-of-way are not shown in the City of Tyler Master Street, the Master Street Plan. And the plan and zoning commission by a 7-0 vote recommends closure of the alley rights-of-way, subject to them being replanted within six months.
Any questions for Kyle? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion by Warren, a second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And Ms. Zuniga, you were here for questions only, right? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
This is a request from C1 light commercial to R2, two-family residential district. The applicant is requesting the zone change to develop three duplexes on the property. The applicant will subdivide the property into three separate lots. The properties to the north, south, and east are currently Zone R2, or R2, two-family, and are currently developed with single-family homes. And the property to the west is currently developed with the commercial property, is currently also Zone C1 light commercial district. This request would amend the future land use guide from single-family and single-family attached, or single-family medium-low density to single-family attached. There are some properties along, along that same street that do have some duplexes, so, and the, the properties surrounding that do indicate that they, they could also be in the future redeveloped as duplexes as well. The zone change to R2 is something that was added back to the UDC recently, this, earlier this year, to allow R2 to be a zoning that can be requested. And so, like I mentioned, the applicant does intend to subdivide that property to allow for three duplexes. Of the notices that were sent, none were returned in favor or in opposition to the request, and the plan and zoning commission by a 5-0 vote recommends approval.
Any questions or Kyle on that?
No. Move to approve, Z7?
Second.
Motion by Warren, a second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z8?
This is a zone change from C1 light commercial district to R1B, single-family residential, and C2 general commercial district. The applicant is requesting that the zone change be approved to allow for the development of single-family homes. The, on the map here, the, the property that's currently on the corner of Chandler Highway, Chandler Highway and Eisenhower Drive is being proposed to be C2 instead of C1. The rest of it will be R1B.
So, R1B is 25, 26, and 27, basically.
That's right. Okay. And that's consistent with how the, the other properties going into that area are being developed. To the north, R1B, and is currently developed with a single-family home. To the east is currently undeveloped, is Zone C2 and R1A. To the south is currently developed with a single-family home. And to the west is Zone C2, and is the location of Hall Truck Center, as well as single-family, or as undeveloped land. This request would amend the future land use guide from neighborhood commercial and single-family to single-family low, medium-low density, as well as general commercial on that corner. And that's consistent with how the other properties are currently zoned on that, on the highway there. Of the notices that were sent, one was returned in favor and zero in opposition, and the plan and zoning commission by a 5-0 vote recommends approval.
Questions of Kyle? And we have no cards on this.
Move to approve, Z8.
A motion by McGee.
Second.
Second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z9?
This is a request for a planned unit residential site plan amendment. This is to allow for the addition of a, or to allow for an additional single-family detached unit. The properties to the north are currently undeveloped but are zoned for residential use. The properties to the south and east are developed with single-family homes, and to the west are currently developed with duplexes. This request would amend the future land use guide from single-family and single-family attached to single-family medium-low density. In 2013, a PUR site plan was approved for one lot for this property to be part of the, as part of the Stonebridge Villas subdivision. This lot was, was shown on the site plan for one, one house. The applicant is now proposing to subdivide this property into two lots to build an additional house. The setbacks are consistent with the existing PUR, the surrounding PUR properties. Of the notices that were sent, two were returned in favor of the request and none in opposition. And the plan and zoning commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval.
Nick, to approve?
Motion by Sellers?
Second.
Second by Westbrook. Any questions for Kyle? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Z10?
This is a similar request to the, the previous one. It's also a PUR site plan amendment in the same area, but this is also to allow for, let me go back, to allow for an additional single-family home. So, the properties to the north are developed with duplexes, to the, the other surrounding properties are developed with single-family homes. The, let me just go to the site plan here. When it was, when it was originally approved, the, the site plan called for six units. They're proposing now to develop seven. The setback, or the setbacks and other restrictions are consistent with, with what was previously approved as well. Of the notices that were sent, three were returned in favor of the request, and two in opposition with a protest of 4.17%. The opposition stated concerns with the proposed turnaround on, on the site. Development Services Engineer has reviewed the site plan and does not have any issue with the proposed turnaround, that it is compliant with the, the regulations for, for turnarounds. And the plan and zoning commission by a 7-0 vote recommends approval of this request.
I have no questions, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve, Z10.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Z11?
This is a zone change from R1A, single-family residential, to PUR, planned unit residential district with the final site plan. The applicant is proposing the zone change to develop 76 detached, single-family homes with private streets. The adjacent properties to the north are developed with a apartment complex, as well as single-family lots. The properties to the east are Zone RMF and R2, and are currently developed with single-family homes and an apartment complex. And to the south is currently undeveloped, undeveloped residential property. This request is consistent with the future land use guide, identifying it as single-family medium-to-low density. The applicant is proposing a gated development for 76, uh, single-family homes with a private street accessed from Waljum Street. There will be two points of access for the, for the development. The proposed setbacks are 20 feet in the front yard, 15 feet rear yard, and five feet between the, or on the side of the, the homes. A six-foot tall fence will be provided around the, the entire property. The current proposed density of the development is 3.92 acres, or 3.92 units per acre, and that is consistent with the, the low-density, single-family developments in the area. Of the 19 notices sent, one was returned in favor and zero in opposition to the request, and the plan and zoning commission recommends approval by a 5-0 vote.
Move to approve, Z11.
Second.
A motion by Westbrook, a second by Sellers. Any questions of Kyle? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, before y'all get up, we're going to take a quick break, and we'll be back in about five minutes. We're in recess for five minutes. After a short recess, we're back, starting on R1.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you again this morning. We want to take the time to thank our local firms and contractors that we're working with to meet the emergencies and deadlines of our consent decree. It's important. One of our partners, A.E., with the approval of this council and the general direction from the city manager and his way, Tyler Water Utilities, has been able to address emergency creek crossings. To date, we've spent, the City of Tyler spent about $444,000 on creek crossings. The original estimate was a little bit over a million dollars, so we've had some significant savings just by working with our local, local partners. There's a couple of items in the consent decree that I think are specific that I need to just mention really, really quickly. On page 15, section 00, the EPA defines the wastewater collection and transmission system with the acronyms of WCTS. But the reason I want to mention this is because when we're dealing with creek crossings, we are in fact addressing some of the challenges in the consent decree. The creek crossings cannot be separated from the wastewater collection system. They are a part of that. The other parts that are significant is also on page 11 in section R, where it talks about gravity mains and force mains. And of course, we have creek crossings that are part of the wastewater collection system that actually, that actually cross that water of the state. So, it becomes extremely important for Tyler Water Utilities to address the creek crossings because they are directly over the waters of the state. And... And by this consent decree, we should be preventing sanitary sewer overflows. But, I just wanted to make sure that we did mention that our partners are, our local partners, our local contractors, local engineers are working effectively with us to help us move in an expeditious way to accomplish the things that we need to do with the, in the matter of the consent decree. Mr. Newhouse will discuss the item related to A.E.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
We've got, do this quickly here. We talked about this item, including a reimbursement for some completed creek crossings. Here's a list of them right now. $173,600 plus. An example of, of one, before and after, the, the line passed right into this overhanging concrete that's been undermined in, in the subsequent repair. A little bit different angle, but you can see what, what kind of work that, that's been done there. We've got six that, right now, currently need help that are, that are moved up the, the scale. These are the six with an estimate of $256,800. Couple of examples there. That first one's there on Sunnybrook, and that second one there is a creek crossing at, on Long West 25th. So, you can see some of these, that, some of these things that we're addressing. So, of course, we're gonna recommend that we pay for some work that's already been done, and we authorize a resolution to reserve the right to pay for additional work as well.
You know, I, I think that, that this is a very important point made on several different levels. And Jimmy, I like your comments, how you prepared them. And I, one of the things I appreciated is you called it the waters of Texas and not the United States, and I appreciate that. Because the United States actually has the wrong definition, and a very harmful definition to us, I think. And a flawed definition as it comes to the consent decree. And then, by being able to use engineers and professionals in our community that are familiar with our system, you see the cost savings that we've been able to obtain. And really, the third thing I want to say is how critically important it is to deal with these issues proactively with creek crossings. Because that is the biggest issue in the consent decree if we have a leakage directly into that water. Okay? And so, the, I really appreciate how staff has worked with the local community, professional community, to really be proactive on these issues. Because I think that is the biggest risk that we see in the, in the community for the wastewater collection system. So, I want to thank you all very much, the staff, to, on what you all have done to, to make a real difference on this item. So, thank you all.
You know, I'll, I'll say that, that I had the opportunity to ride around with Mr. Shoal and look at a number of these creek crossings. And when you see the pictures, you see the pictures, but when you see these creek crossings out there in reality, and you see all the trees that have got caught up behind it, and just the flow and just the, the power of water, that, that you've really gotta be preventative to keep from having a, a huge problem. So, I agree with the mayor that, that being preventative is, is, is great. So, thank you guys.
And so, Paul and Jimmy, I really want to thank y'all. Y'all have really stepped up in this, this department and really made a change for the better in our community. I want to thank you all at this time, too.
Well, I just want to add, I'll be the third person. But, the fact, too, that you designed access roads and so on, that adds that continued maintenance piece to it also, too. It allows us to make sure that those right-ofways are, are clear for long-term.
So, I move to approve R1.
Second.
Motion by Warren. A second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. R2?
Mayor and Council, yeah. Item R2 before you is request that City Council consider adopting a resolution appointing City of Tyler representative to the Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And that appointee that we are proposing today is Mark Watley. He is currently the, the board chair over at Smith County Appraisal District. And this will be his fourth term, going into his fourth term if he's reappointed by you all today. So, it is recommended by the mayor that there be a reappointment of City Representative Mark Watley to the Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors. And that City Council adopt attached resolution making that appointment.
I think with some changes that are gonna be going on over there, I think it's good to have the continuation of Mark on as chairman of that board through some of the, the, the new changes. And then, he'll probably want to retire pretty soon.
Is there a term limit for that position?
There isn't. So, there's a continued performance for that one.
I doubt he wants to continue forever, but I think it's important for him to, to do it again for the short term, for sure.
I move to approve R2.
Second.
Motion by Sellers. A second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
R3?
Yes, Mayor and Council. The City of Tyler is a gas utility.
Are those new glasses?
Yes, sir.
I like them.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Pardon me.
We have to hear for your consideration, day is a resolution for suspending an increase in rates. That was filed in an application by CenterPoint on November 14, 2019. The CenterPoint Gas Division, that is a part of the Beaumont Division and East Texas Division, which Tyler is a part of, filed this application seeking an increase in gas rates of about $6.8 million per year. According to the application in CenterPoint, the, the impact on average residential customer would be an increase of about $2.84 per month for the Beaumont area, $1.41 for the East Texas area, $8.19 for the Tyler PGA area, and $5.21 for the Northeast Texas PGA area. Among other things also, CenterPoint is asking or seeking to consolidate the Beaumont, East Texas, Tyler, and Northeast Texas regions into one PGA. The city is authorized to actually suspend the rate change for 90 days for a legitimate purpose. And obviously, one of those legitimate purposes is to allow the city to study and investigate this application and to ensure that the filing complies with the law. The city will be working with, in conjunction with the East Texas Coalition of Cities, served by CenterPoint, to conduct this study. So, the resolution that is before you does several things. It authorizes the city to participate in the Coalition of Cities. It authorizes the hiring of the attorney, Thomas Brocardo, one that has, the city has always worked with in these matters in the law firm of Lloyd Gosling, to present, represent the city in the matters in front of the Railroad Commission. It also allows the city to intervene in the CenterPoint application at the Railroad Commission in the gas utilities docket. And finally, it provides that the company will reimburse the city for reasonable rate expenses. And no individual city incurs liability for payment of the rate case expenses. What will occur is that legal counsel and its consultants, approved by the Coalition, will submit monthly invoices to the city, which will be forwarded to CenterPoint for reimbursement. And so, what we have before you is this resolution to allow a suspension of these rates that would be effective December 19, 2019, and allow the city to participate in the Coalition studying of the application.
Right. And this is something that we've done in the past as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Move to approve R3.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook. A second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, the first requirement in the consent decree under the compliance section is to complete the CMOM program. The second requirement was to set up and implement a training program for our wastewater collection team. The third item was to create a sanitary sewer overflow response plan. The fourth item was to create procedures for sanitary sewer overflows and the proper documentation thereof. Another requirement was system-wide routine cleaning, and we were to revise the high-frequency cleaning program. And finally, one of the requirements is to develop an ongoing sewer inspection program. That is a, an internal sewer inspection program. So, under this program, the City of Tyler shall internally inspect the wastewater collection system and transmission system. Sewer mains that are 24 inches and less are required to be inspected on a seven-year cycle. And the sewer mains that are 24 inches and larger are required to be inspected on a 10-year cycle. So, Mr. Newhouse will be presenting the inspection and cleaning of sewer mains in Basin 7 and 15. He will also address M2 and M3 under these same provisions of the consent decree.
Hello again.
Yes, sir.
So, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, this is a part of our inspection program. We, if you remember last year, we had a, awarded a bid to Taplin Group LLC. It was an IDIQ, an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract, and we awarded them year one. Now, we are recommending award of year two and let them continue. They were the lowest bidder at the time, they, for all three years. And based on references, they're the highest-rated contractor. And based on our experience, from the Water Service Center to the GS to myself, they have performed stellarly. They've done an excellent job. We don't have any complaints. As of, I just got an update today. As of yesterday, they were 96 percent complete with their contract, the lines that they were given to do versus 77.6 percent for year one and 92.8 percent for year two. So, they, they are ahead relative to past contractors that did, that performed work in the city. Again, Dr. Johnson mentioned Basins 7 and 17 is what they are going to be working on, the pinkish color there. And then, the purple colors, I'm sorry, the blue colors are what they were working on this year. Basins 4, 10, 16, 11, and 12. So, with that, we will recommend that they, we continue with this contract and award them year two for $844,073.25.
So, when you do the ones that are in South Tyler, is there less abuse or less wear just because they're not as old?
That's the biggest thing. The southern ones are a little bit newer, and therefore, they are a little easier to inspect. They're, they're, they're working in Basin 10 right now, and there's just, that was part of-
Can you put the map back up when you say Basin 10?
Sorry. Basin 10 right there, it's right there on top of 13. It's squeezed in between 11 and, and 12 there. 11's very, very similar, but just reading their, their production report, there's a lot of taps and a lot of broken pipe and just, you know, they get their nozzle in there and they have to fight to get it out, you know, when they're cleaning. So, it's a, it's a challenge in some of these older lines, for sure.
Well, I, I do appreciate the model that you followed because you've taken the hardest areas first.
And that was, that was part of, of the plan. Because they needed the most attention. So, hopefully, we'll-
That's correct.
Work on our SSOs and limit them.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Move to approve M1.
Motion by Westbrook. A second by Warren. Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The second item here in M2 is for the right-ofway contract. The, the contract was awarded to Agent Shoal, and they completed all of the contract with 97 percent of the budget being used. There's a quick shot of some of our right-ofaways. You can imagine going through there to doing some work. And this is what a, not that same right-ofway, but a right-ofway looks like after the clearing. So, we are recommending that we close this contract out and release or authorize the lease of their retainage.
Move to approve M2.
Motion by Sellers. A second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M3?
This is for a change order in our multi-sensor inspection. Last year, we had a, we broke the lines out into small diameter, and that's what Taplin's doing, the 18 inches and smaller. And they're cleaning and inspecting. Red Zone is just doing the multi-sensor. So, we're getting an estimation of how much debris is in the lines because these large diameter lines are very expensive to clean. So, they are currently almost 90 percent done with their contract to date, 190, almost 193,000 out of the 215. And they've used about 80 percent of their budget. Part of the goal was to identify some of those corrugated metal lines that, that collapsed in the past and caused some serious SSOs. We've identified 10 of them. We've also identified that there's a few lines about 21,000 feet that have so much debris in them, the water level's so high that they can't even inspect them. So, they need to clean them and get that debris out. And that's where this change order is coming from, at $8 a foot to clean those lines. And $8 a foot is a good price because if you go to buy board, it ranges from $8 up to as high as 17 and even $19 a foot. So, so, the ACE pipe is working with Red Zone, and they're the ones doing the cleaning. And so, they're, they're giving us what I believe to be a good price. And that's why we're recommending that we authorize this change order for 171, too.
Move to approve M3.
Motion by Warren. A second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all. M4?
Amendment 4 is an amendment to the design contract with Elige Engineering. This amendment was previously approved by staff, so we are requesting that Council ratify the approval of this amendment. The amendment provided for some additional design work that allowed us to relocate the storm sewer. Originally, it was relocated out from under the houses but still on the private properties. And then, at one point, it was decided the best thing would be to actually put the storm sewer out under the pavement of the street. And so, this, this amendment provided that additional design work so that the line could be redesigned out into the street on fleshy. It also provided for some additional storm inlets, which would take care of some flooding issues that tended to occur on fleshy. So, again, the amendment was approved by staff at the time that it was negotiated. And so, this work has been complete for quite some time. And in fact, the construction of this project is actually complete now. We are working on the final paperwork to get that contract closed out. So, again, we are requesting that you ratify the staff approval of this amendment in the amount of $32,250.
So, the barricades and everything are down? Roads are open back up?
I don't know that the barricades are down and open. Staff, in fact, staff is supposed to be doing the TV camera inspection this morning, looking at the internal pipe to make sure all the joints and whatnot are, were done correctly. So, again, I don't know that the barricades are down just yet because we are still doing our walkthroughs and inspections.
Move to approve M4.
Motion by Sellers. A second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M5?
M5 is a, is an engineering contract, again, with Elige Engineering. This project is to address some failing storm sewer pipes in two separate locations. The first location is at 3521 South Broadway. We have an existing 48-inch pipe that goes through that property. That's a commercial-
That's a commercial property. That pipe has failed, which has caused some fairly significant sinkholes in the back parking lot for that facility. It's also damaged pretty heavily their enclosure for their dumpster, as well as some other areas on that property. So that really needs to be addressed as quickly as possible. The second location is at 529 Sutherland Drive. That's a residential location. Again, the city has, excuse me, an existing 42-inch storm drain pipe that runs through the property, and a similar situation where that pipe has failed, which has caused a very significant sinkhole in the backyard for this property owner that the city needs to be addressing. So again, this is an engineering contract with Elige Engineering in the amount of $67,500. It will provide for the design, construction management, and construction inspection for these two projects.
Is this the same company that did the Old Bullard Road?
I'm sorry, the-
Is this the same company that did the Old Bullard Road drainage? No?
No, that was Brandon, I believe.
Who did the engineering for Old Bullard Road over there next to the mall?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I just didn't hear what you were saying. No, ma'am, that was Brandon Corporation that did Bullard.
Thank you.
But this is the company that did the Fleschel project.
And I just have a quick question. So I see the purple line running through a few of those buildings. Those buildings were built after, on top of the pipes?
We, well, go ahead because I think one-
Presumably that is the case. Now, on the top picture, that's the South Broadway location. That pipe is not drawn exactly correctly. The pipe actually doesn't go quite as through the middle of the building as it is depicted on that, on that map. It, it does go under the building, but it's actually skewed more so that it hits just the very corner of the building.
Right, but we're, we're, we're still under the philosophy that if you built a building on top of our drainage, that's, that's your requirement to solve. Is that correct?
That's your requirement to solve, although-
The private sector.
Yes. Although if it collapses and we have, where, as far as does this blocking of drainage in other areas, we've got to work on that.
Right, right. But if people have built on top of the drainage project, it's their responsibility.
The things that are on top of that are, yes.
That's correct. Okay. Okay, so, so the one that goes under that building?
Well, there's the one that's, the one on the top picture that's south of Amherst. There's a nail salon there. That map is not entirely accurate. The purple line that goes through the nail salon, like through the middle of it, doesn't actually go through the middle of it. It goes around the building. Although it does, you say, clip out part of the-
It, it does. It clips just the very corner of it. It's not straight through the middle of the building as it, as it's shown. Unfortunately, our map wasn't, wasn't correct.
Okay, just to back up, just, and I'm probably, I may not be able to do this, but the last thing we talked about, the one on Fleschel, the house that was on top of the storm drain?
Mm-hmm.
Did the people that built the house know the storm drain was there?
I do not know.
No, we, we never asked about as far as did you know it was there or anything. Our main thing is our storm drain is running through your house, underneath your house has collapsed, and we have to fix that or else everything starts flooding.
Okay, so let's just go, let's move on. I guess I brought up the topic, but let's move on for a minute. So on M5?
I make a motion now.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second from McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. Amendment 6 is, again, an engineering contract with Schaumburg &amp; Polk Incorporated. This is for the design, construction management, and construction inspection of an extension of a water line on Baskin Road between Southwood Drive and Old Omen Road. This is a project that Tyler Water Utilities has been trying to get completed for several years, and in fact, council had previously approved a contract for the extension just on the far east, I'm sorry, the far west side of the project. So the, the extension would have just connected Southwood Drive to the water line that's on Shiloh, which then turns into Kent. And that construction never actually proceeded because we were unable to secure the easements that we needed in order to be able to bore underneath the railroad. So that pro, that construction contract was canceled. We've regrouped. At this point, we would like to proceed with the extension from Shiloh over to Old Omen, which now eliminates boring under the railroad on the Kent side of the project. So we've eliminated the need for that easement. So we are able to proceed with the remainder of the project at this time.
Well-needed, well-anticipated. So I'm excited with that. I move to approve M6.
Second.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M7 is something that we are going to pull from the agenda item this, at this meeting. It'll be brought back up at the next meeting. So M8?
Okay. M8 is the contract for the 2020 asphalt crack seal program. The crack seal program is a program that we do in order to basically, this, this contract includes base repairs and sealing the cracks with, on the surface of the pavement in advance of either the overlay program or the seal coat program. So this is the contract for the 2020 crack seal, which, again, will be sealing the cracks on the streets that have been identified for the 2020 asphalt overlay and the 2020 seal coat and Onyx Seal Coat programs.
Okay, so while it is segmented between the general fund and the half-cent sales tax fund-
Correct.
The, the general fund is, of course, where we have, the Fund 103 is called something different now. But that's where, that's where we have increased property tax-
Correct.
-to create about a million and a half to a million seven in annual money to do overlay, I'm not, pardon me, not overlay-
It's the seal coat.
-seal coat and for the crack seal. Now, the portion that's in the half-cent sales tax fund of this work, as I understand, is only going to be utilized in conjunction with our overlay program.
That's correct.
That's correct, right?
Correct.
So it would be considered a repair as we begin to overlay the street to make sure that the base is properly sealed. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
So it is part of an overlay program and not part of maintenance? It's more, it's the repair portion?
Correct. It, it's, it's really required to seal these streets before you can even do the overlay or the seal coat. If you tried to put those overlays or those seal coats down on streets that were cracked, the cracks would just show right back through. And of course, the cracks allow water down into the base, so they have to be fixed before you can move forward.
So the other streets that were doing the crack seal, the seal coating that will be done, the seal coating will be done from the Fund 103.
That's correct.
Right. And then the other will be done through the half-cent, where it's actually the milling and the repair of the road.
Correct.
Right. Okay. I know it seems obvious to you because it's what, what you do day in and day out, but I'm, I'm just making sure that we have, for the rest of us, there's a clear delineation between the two projects. Since it's all on one bid, it's not, wasn't defined in the different categories to the layman like us, even though y'all know that that's how it's defined.
And I think it's important for us to know that. When we did Holly Tree, it was overlay, right?
That's correct.
The section. And now we're making sure there's no leaks underneath before we overlay.
Correct.
Because that one's been dug up 17 times. I've said that before, haven't I?
Yeah, you have said that. The, the thing that, that I'm really proud of is how this council has stood up and, and created that Fund 103 where we're actually doing more and more maintenance out of the property taxes instead of the half-cent sales tax. And as that fund will continue to grow, it will be very beneficial. And maybe in future years, we could add a quarter of a penny, a half a penny here and there, and continue to build that fund to be even stronger.
My answer.
So, thank you. And I, I guess with my long explanation, I'll make a motion to approve M8.
Second.
Second by McKeller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. M9?
Mayor, Council, you have item M9 before you. It's a request that City Council consider, consider reviewing and accepting the revenue expenditure report for the period ending September 30 of 2019. The attach, the attach report represents about 70% of the appropriations for the city. The other 30% are internal service funds, debt service funds, and things of such. This report compares actual revenues and expenses to date with revenues and expenses as of the same period last year. And budget revenues and expenditure amounts for the last fiscal year can also be compared to current projections. And you have the detail in your packet, and I'll just hit some of the highlights in order to conserve some of your time. General fund revenues from all sources are expected to be about 1.7 million greater than budget. Sales tax was up 6% as compared to the prior fiscal year. Expenditures are expected to be about 822,000 less than budget as well. Big part of that savings is related to salary and benefits. And we'll move on to water utilities. Revenues are expected to be about 800 and, almost 830,000 less than budget. Expenditures are expected to be 1,385 less than budget. A large part of that is due to salary and benefit savings as well. I, I think what you'll see is a recurring theme through these is there's a lot of savings through salary and benefits, but we're beginning to fill those positions. So I suspect as I give these reports to you going into the current fiscal year, we won't quite have the savings as we begin to fill positions. Our next major fund is our solid waste fund, and revenues were about 550,000 greater than budget. However, expenses were about a million over budget. And a large part of that overage was due to vehicle maintenance. Just the maintenance alone on our vehicles were about 450,000 or 60,000 over budget. So I've met with the solid waste department, and we're just trying to plan going into this fiscal year. And what we're planning on doing, they're going to replace some of the vehicles that they have. They're looking at replacing 10 vehicles this coming year. The, the commercial trucks, which was our greatest overage on maintenance, we're going to replace four of those trucks, and we hope to get those in in February, March timeframe. We're going to make some calls, see if we can get them in a little earlier. On our residential side, we're expecting to replace six trucks there. Unfortunately, those are kind of June, July timeframe, but we're, we're trying to get them to get, get them to us as quick as we can. So just to kind of give you a perspective, we have about 40, about 46 vehicles in our fleet. We're going to replace about 10 of them. So we'll continue to monitor this fund very closely as we go throughout the year to look for ways that we can make up the deficit that we had last year. So, so we'll continue to monitor that one very closely. Also, the airport fund is our next fund. Expenditures were about 100 grand less than budget, or revenues were about 100 grand less than budget, expenditures were about 40,000 less than budget. This is another fund that we'll be watching closely going into next fiscal year. We think we'll start to see some recovery. We've got new airline in. You all approved some increases on fees and things for airports. So hopefully, we, we expect that to, to help out the airport fund. Development services revenues were about 200,000 less than budget. Expenses were about 20,000 less than budget. Still have a pretty healthy fund balance in that fund, so, so we, we'll watch that fund closely as well. Hotel motel fund, revenues came in about 250,000 greater than budget, so we're looking good there. Our health fund, at end of the year, about where we forecasted, so we've got a, we've got a good fund balance with our health fund.
You have to say that number. I will say that number.
It's about 5 million. I can give you the exact number. Let's see. Let's see, we're going to end with 5.3 million. That's a pretty nice number.
Thank you.
All right. So that kind of concludes my report. I know it's highly summarized, but it's recommended that you all approve the revenue expenditure report for September 30 of 2019.
Motion by McKeller?
Second.
Second by Westbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. M10?
Morning, Mayor and Council, City Manager. I'm excited to be here today to talk about this item. As you know, our fleet is probably the most visible part of our police services. You see them every day as we're out on the streets. You see them in the school zones. You see them in our neighborhoods. It's the mobile platform that we put officers out throughout the city in every one of our beats as we, as we go out there to try to address crime issues, but also to deter it. And as we get ready to move through the presentation, I do want to mention Leroy Sparrow and Stan Stoffringen and then Deb Schreck, as they continue to do an amazing job because our fleet right now is in as good a shape as I've seen it in the 26 years that I've been here. And they continue looking for opportunities for them to improve that. As we move forward, we're here today to talk about the purchase of 12 Chevy Tahoe police pursuit vehicles. We use co-ops all the time, through buy board, through GSA, through other things as we move forward, to try to save money for the city. Here, we use the Sheriff's Association of Texas purchasing co-op. Through that, Stan and Deb did the research that identified reliable Chevrolet out of Richardson, Texas, to be the one that we purchased these 12 vehicles from. In addition, the cost of these vehicles is $31,567 per vehicle, and total cost of $378,804. And all these are budgeted funds that are through our Vehicle Services Capital Fund, our amortization fund that we do every year. We have it up there also that you're going to see another item, and I'll just mention it here, on consent agenda item, there's another $140,000 that you'll consider today to go into these vehicles. As we move forward, you know, talking to Stan earlier, by using this, it's estimated we're going to save about $4,000 per vehicle on the purchase of the vehicles, but also another $1,300, and I'll explain the build out of these. Currently, we've been building our own. We buy them car, we bring them in-house, and we actually equip it with our, right here in-house. The research they did through Dana Public Safety, we will, they will actually deliver the vehicles to Dana Public Safety. They'll deliver all 12 of them at one time. Right now, it takes about a month for us to build a vehicle per vehicle. They'll line all 12 of them up in their bay, and they will build all 12 of them at one time. equipment on the front end of them. You'll see the interior of the vehicle. The only thing we will add to that vehicle when it gets here is that computer that sits in that bay right there. The actual, the actual install of the transportation cages for prisoners and stuff is in the back of them. So when they get here, the only thing we have to do is to coordinate with PDQ services here to put the striping package on them. So it's a big improvement for us. So we'll, we'll turn these around. Instead of being a 10, 11, 12-month build, we'll do it in about a month. And we'll put those vehicles, so 60 to 90 days after these are ordered, they'll take delivery of them. Another month after that, we'll take delivery of all 12 vehicles here and be ready to put them into police services. Based on that, it's recommended the city council authorize the city manager to approve purchasing goods through the Sheriff's Association of Texas Purchasing Co-op and also recommended the city council consider authorizing the city manager to purchase 12 Chevy Tahos from reliable Chevrolet under this purchasing cooperative.
And this is all through the fleet fund that you, we've been saving for?
Yes.
Correct. Part of our replacement program, yes, sir.
Part of the replacement program. Good. Thank you very much. Move to approve him.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Sellers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Chief Kober?
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. I'm coming before you today with M11 for replacing a fire engine. Unfortunately, we can't buy 12 at one time. I wish we could.
Here's cost a little more, man.
Yes, a little bit more. Hours are custom-built. They don't come off of just an easy assembly line.
I never knew what a fire engine cost till we saw this.
Yeah, it keeps coming up, don't it? There's a mission statement, of course, to protect lives and property through fire and other hazards through incident mitigation, education, and prevention. The cycle of a fire engine, for an engine, is about 12 years with about three years in reserve. We did have a little lapse where we had an economic downturn and we didn't buy some engines during some years, which may require that we purchase multiple engines in some years in the future so that we can catch up with the retirement dates. We are in good shape on the two ladders that we have in service. They're 2014. But we do have a consultant study that stated that we need a third ladder at Station 10 at some point. So that's at a future date. Okay. Primary function of a fire engine, of course, is safe, rapid response to any incident. This is the criteria that we use when we evaluate the replacement of an engine. Of course, safety and reliability, mileage, time in service, increased repair costs, which we, of course, see a lot of, as well as NFPA standard 1901. The vehicle in question is Engine 9, is currently located at Peluxi, on Peluxi, just short of 49, between Cumberland and 49. It's a 2006 model, has about 6,200 hours on it and over 90,000 miles. We do use the committee, apparatus committee make recommendations. They looked at several different vendors and they came up with the Pierce Enforcer Puck. And Puck stands for Pierce Ultimate Configuration. The committee felt that this was the right truck, right size, right configuration for the terrain here in Tyler. Also, there's an extended warranty with this vehicle that we're able to get, which sort of cuts back on some of our maintenance costs, as well as that they have relocated their, one of their facilities in Gray County, which puts it a lot closer than the old Spartan. We used to have to drive to Mansfield to get our trucks warranty serviced. This is what the vehicle will look like. Thank you for this truck that we received just a few months ago. It's at Station 10. We're going to duplicate this truck for Engine 9. And so it'd be this same truck, except it will say E9 instead of E10. We did make a few modifications because once the firefighters had it there at the station, they wanted to make a few tweaks to it. So we did make a few tweaks to the the new one. Our fleet at a glance, you'll notice there the engines in red, those are engines that are already over 10 years as frontline service. So again, the optimum is 12 with three in reserve after that. Also, the green Engine 9, if this passes today, that will turn black because if we were procure it. Takes eight and a half to nine months to get one of these in. So if approved today, we look for this truck to be in somewhere August, September of 2020. You see the ladder trucks there, also the rescue vehicles, 14-year-old frontline Rescue 3 and a 28-year-old backup 2 at Rescue 33, which we're hoping to replace in some time in the future. There are really no standards for rescue vehicles like at ORF trucks. Some people recommend 10 to 12, but it depends on the use and whether parts are still available. That's what we're running into with Rescue 33. It's 1991 and we're having difficulty finding parts for it at this point. So even though it's still a viable truck, it still works, parts are not readily available for it. Rescue 8 is going to be retired, so that's why you see the asterisk there. It's, it's old, but we're going to retire it when we get the new trucks in.
Yeah, very good.
We did have a few cost savings in the purchase because the city of Tyler pays with cash. So that's a great thing. We're able to save over $9,600 because we're going to prepay for the chassis. And then because we're going to fully pay for it and not do a payment plan, we're going to save an additional $8,200 off the cost of the vehicle. We're going to go through the Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, which helps us deal directly with the manufacturer and also by meeting the needs of the department and the community and assuring a good financial value of the truck. That contract fee with the Galveston Agreement is $2,000. So it is recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to purchase a Pierce Custom Enforcer Puck Fire Engine for the Fire Department from Sittens Martin Emergency Group, Houston, Texas, HDAC contract FS 1219 in the amount of $623,227.
And this is paid through the, this is, was in the budget, your budget?
Yes, sir. It's already in the budget. Yes, sir.
Right. But this, so this is just straight up cash. This is not through the fleet fund, correct?
Some of the money was budgeted into the vehicle replacement fund and part of the money was through our, I think it's in your council information. It's a split. Some of the money was budgeted in their account, some was budgeted in ours. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would like the chief to know that District 3 is ecstatic with what we see at Gentry Parkway and Palace. And I want to offer this motion for you, but do you need 12?
My boss is over to the right, so I'm going to say I think it should be a planned strategic move to add to our fleet.
The city manager says.
Okay, so I'm sorry, we have a motion.
Can I say to him before I second that I pass Station 2 almost on a daily basis and those guys take such good care of that engine? They're polishing and shining on that thing every day. So thank you for the program that's in place.
You're welcome. The men take very good care of the equipment that we're blessed to get from the council.
Great. Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you very much. Now we're on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda's presented.
Motion by Westbrook, a second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few items of note. Our Roots and Weeds podcast released a new episode this past week. This time, we interviewed Nancy Rangel, our East Texas Census Committee Chair, and NPO manager Michael Howell upon the upcoming census. How it benefits Tyler, how do people need to get involved, and also opportunities that people can get jobs, actually helping with the census of going out there and making sure that the data and information comes in. So you can go to your podcast through either SoundCloud, iTunes, or whatever your podcast choice is and be able to listen to the latest Roses and Weeds episode through there. The Glass Recreation Center continues for renovations. We have it right now. Some major innovations going on over there. The new exercise equipment has been brought in and that has been for the weight room as well as for the other parts of the building. And so that's being installed right now. The gym floor is being stripped and blacked and be repainted in the coming week. We've repainted the inside. The restrooms over there have been worked on and been replaced also. And so we're scheduled to reopen it on December 16th with all the new improvements that have been going in. And as the mayor talked about with the fire trucks, the same thing. This has also came out of the city council's budget for fiscal year 20 that y'all authorized funds for this. Something of note that to make sure that the community is well aware of is the Texas Department of Transportation will be hosting their first public house on the South Broadway Improvement Project on January 28th at Dayspring Methodist Church off of South Cumberland or off of West Cumberland. The project covers traffic mobility improvements with from the South Town Drive to FM 2813. And it's a pretty major project that they're looking at and putting forward. And so for our ability to have the community take a look at it and give their feedback to Texas dot is very much needed. Our city staff also, this is a brag moment for us, we participate in the Smith County United Way every year. And this past year, we actually did real well with raising $25,000. Davis Dixon, who I saw back there at some point, I don't know if he's still there.
He's there, he is.
Alerted me today that we have far surpassed our goal and have raised more than $28,000 with employees giving their funds to United Way to help with programs throughout this community. And so that's just some of that shows kind of the size of the hearts of our staff, especially during this holiday season, and also goes towards Davis Dixon and his team for leading the United Way campaign for the city. And so with that, Mayor.
Awesome. So at this time, we're going to recess for executive session. Executive item number one under Texas Government Code, section 551.074, Personnel Matters Deliberation Regarding the Following: Employment Duties and Evaluation of the City Manager. I do want to let you, the last time it was on the agenda, and I'll say this as well, this is a yearly process that we go through. This is very standard and customary for us. There are no issues. It is strictly an evaluation. So at this time, we will recess for executive session. At this time, we're calling the city council meeting back in session. We are coming back from executive session and we do not have any action today. It is now noon, so I want to thank each and every council member for your service as always. And it has been a long day today. So thank you very much for your patience and your consideration to the public. Thank you. We are, oh, yeah, motion, all that stuff. Yeah, we're adjourned.